That were different. Welcome to the podium, Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
We've prepared four questions that were different from the ones we used in the last forum, although they touch on the same issues, a lot of them. And those, these candidates had these questions in advance so they could prepare and be articulate. And then we gave them one question. There's one question, a surprise question that you aren't prepared for. But if you know anything about Hampton County at all, you should be able to answer it, so. I'm going to identify three problems in our county, and we will address each one as a separate question. First, what ideas or strategies do you have to bring better financial accountability to county government, particularly in repaying the misspent capital project sales tax money while putting us on a stronger financial footing?
Accountability is one of the primary reasons I'm running for council. Currently, our citizens are not well enough informed about county spending. We're stonewalled at council meetings when questions are asked. First step would be eliminate the carte blanche approach to spending given to the administrator and finance director's position as outlined in Section 8 and Section 10 of the county budget ordinance. This time, I cannot find any record of any fiscal control policies that set limits on amounts spent, transferred, or borrowed. As a member of council, I assure the public that these policies will not only be written and posted, but they will be enforced. As a member of council, I assure the public that we will do everything we can to pay back the misspent CPS funding. And the current financial recovery plan has some good ideas, but does fall short. The current plan pledges to commit a portion of the excess general fund revenues, but never mentions a set amount. It should be in the budget with a set dollar amount so taxpayers are confident that money will be returned to its rightful place. The Airport Commission budget alone grew by almost $50,000 from 2022 to 2023, while still no explanation of where the missing money for Recreation Complex was used. We will have to apply restrictions throughout the budget, but our citizens will be getting what they ask for. As we all know, for Hampton County to have a strong financial footing, it's going to require economic development.
Thirty seconds.
We should continue to work with the SCA and other regional development partners to leverage industry and to put roots in this county. Just this year, Google and Facebook said they were investing billions to build more data centers and offices. Some of these are being built in rural communities just like Hampton. I feel it's time we try to leverage this sector. Over the last five years, tech jobs were the third fastest growing occupation in rural communities. I believe a strong partnership with our high schools and the technical college, we can provide a workforce that is trained and ready for this type of opportunity to come to Hampton County.
Thank you. We're trying to be courteous with the two minutes. If you're in the middle of a sentence, I'll allow you to finish the sentence. The next question, many citizens are discouraged and disillusioned when it comes to that elusive recreation complex. Give us hope. Tell us, how are we going to make it a reality?
I am currently an active member of Recreation Now. Our goal is to not only find what happened to the misspent funds, but to do whatever it takes to provide a recreation complex for our community. For the past five years, I've been the commissioner of our county Little League baseball program. You will not find a more passionate person when it comes to the needs of better recreation facilities for our county. My dear friend, Mr. Randy Vaughn, recently submitted a plan to have the county and school district partner together to utilize the soon-to-will-be-vacant Wade Hampton campus. And that could be a potential hub for recreational opportunities, as well as the Estill High School. I applaud this idea and do my best to work with our local school district, not against them. There are grants available from the federal government as well as the private sector. We need to leverage these grants and pressure, and we need to put pressure on our state and federal delegates to leverage monies on behalf of our county. Just this past year, Recreation Now and our baseball league, we were candidates for refurbishment grant for our baseball fields. We did not win the grant, but we did gain a lot of knowledge on how to approach these type of grants. I've heard from our neighboring communities that have invested in recreational facilities and seen the benefits and profits. We've been told by economic development partners that recreation opportunities were second in importance to attract new businesses, only behind schools and hospitals. I grew up playing sports and have seen firsthand the importance of being part of a team. A vote for me, and I promise we'll be on the same team when it comes to prioritizing our youth in this community.
Very good. All right, you finished a few seconds early. What steps will you take to improve communication with your constituents, and better yet, involve more residents in the decision-making process?
Let me just tell you, it was hard doing research for tonight's forum. Their information is just not well documented. One of the easiest ways to get more residents involved would be make sure all of our board and commissions are full. The county website says the boards are essential to the well-being of the county, but it seems the current delegation and administration has failed to make sure every seat on these boards and commissions were filled. I myself have tried to fill a vacant seat and was met with resistance. As I searched through the county archive online, some of the council meeting minutes are posted, but definitely not all of them. All boards, commissions, and council meetings should be recorded and archived for the public to view. We live in a digital era where I can petition my friends, or my wife can petition her friends to decide what outfit she wants to wear tonight. But we're not leveraging this technology for public opinion when it comes to decision-making in our county. I understand council may not be able to discuss everything brought to light by the public during a meeting, but the current stonewalling that happens at the meetings are just unacceptable. We should partner with outside agencies such as South Carolina Association of Counties that offer information and support to help us improve communication. I will work alongside our county technology director and other members of council to get information out quickly to the public, not after the fact. I just think more communication and better communication would probably solve some of the negativity that we see currently out in the media and on social media today.
Okay, you have thirty seconds, but if you're through with that question, we can move on. Okay. We may have touched on this in a previous question, but how will you help council, if elected, be more transparent and forthcoming when it comes to every penny of the public's money and its business?
I have never seen myself as a politician or even wanting to get involved in politics. But the current condition of our county and the lack of transparency is why I'm standing before you now. I will approach every decision made on behalf of our county from a Hampton County citizen's first approach, one that wants to be informed and part of the future. It's easy for us to stand behind and stand to the side and kind of make promises and we'll do things or talk about what's not being done. So that's why I'm here today, is to be a part of the solution, not part of the problem, continue to play. I'll go in more detail on what I referenced earlier. Section 8 states the position of the administrator has authority to transfer appropriate funds from departments as necessary to achieve the goals of the budget. The policy is not, this policy, if not eliminated, should come with some dollar amount threshold that would require council approval. And I don't mean just council approval, I mean council approval at a public hearing. A public hearing in front of the community will find out where our money's being spent. Section 10 gives that same position, the right, and also the finance director's right, the position of finance director's right to authorize tax anticipation notes, AKA takeout a loan, due to shortfalls or delays in revenue spent. Currently, the only policy that I've been able to find on record is in the job description of the administrator that states the position must review and approve or deny all person's requests greater than $100. I think it's great to have a threshold, but we need more enforced financial policies that shine a light on how much and where our taxpayers' dollars are being spent.
Thirty seconds.
At every monthly council meeting, the minutes should include purchase order request over a certain dollar amount threshold. Again, as stated before, with advancement in technology, I'm sure through our county website and social media, we could keep the public more informed. I cannot stress enough the importance of not only having policies that are more transparent, but we need to vote in new county council that will be compliant in these new guidelines. If you will consider me for your vote, I promise my door will always be open, and you'll have my promise to always be forthcoming.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. I'm sorry, I'm a news reporter, I'm taking notes. That's all the questions we have for you. We thank you. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. We have one question that you haven't prepared for, but you should be able to answer this. You, if elected, you'll be an advocate for Hampton County wherever you go. Pretend I'm interested in moving my family to Hampton County and finding a job, but I've heard some negative things about this place. Tell me why I should move here?
That's easy, and it was earlier spoken about, it's the people. My wife and I, we're raising small children here, young children here, and I can't tell you, we've often contemplated possibly relocating. But this is home, this is my roots. And it's not just roots here that keep me here, it's the people who keep me here. I was recently involved in a pretty bad accident. And I can't, I'm overwhelmed, I can get emotional now talking about the outpouring of support that I received from people on the street that I didn't even, that I didn't know even knew who I was. The text messages, the phone calls, the Facebook messages, asking how I was and checking on me. The outpouring of support that my wife's received whenever I got home. There's, the people here is not like no other. It doesn't always seem to be, we seem divided in the media, but I can always promise you, we always come together when we have each other's back. And I think that's the greatest thing about Hampton County. It's a community that supports each other and is always there for each other.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. You're doing well. Thank you for being here. And we'll move to our next candidate. The next candidate is Mr. Jordan J.J. Jinks.
Evening, everyone.
Hello, Mr. Jinks, how are you?
How you doing, Mr. Witt?
Good to see you again, always a pleasure. The, as you know, we have four questions that you prepared for, one that you haven't. You'll have two minutes per question, and I didn't go over this earlier, but the previous candidate did a great job. You addressed the issues, addressed county council as a whole. We don't want to single out any individuals if we can. If you want to attack anybody, you can attack me, but you're a gentleman and I know you're fair.
I don't have a reason to.
I'm going to identify three problems in our county, and we will address each one as a separate question. First, what ideas or strategies do you have to bring better financial accountability to county government, particularly in repaying the misspent capital project sales tax money while putting the county on a stronger financial footing?
Question one. Accountability would come from setting up the people that set and control the budget. Counsel is number one, which means I have to hold counsel accountable, my colleagues, for whatever that budget is set up for. And then the person that disperses that budget has to be held accountable. Question two. Which is, I was informed that they have a recovery plan set up. So a strategy for our county government to recruit monies from misspent monies would be, let's stick to the recovery plan. My strategy doesn't mean a thing if we have something in place. I think we first need to see if it works. If it doesn't work, then my opinion matters. But the base to that is, whatever that recovery plan entails, I hold my colleagues accountable. The footprint for better finances in Hampton County. I don't think we need to depend on public funding, federal funding, state funding, as much as we have to. Our golden ticket, as Mr. Haggis mentioned about 95, is a golden ticket.
Thirty seconds.
Beaufort County wanted to annex YAMC. I don't agree, because all Beaufort County wanted was I-95. It wasn't anything to do with YAMC. If we utilize 95, 90,000 cars pass that exit every day and puts 25,000 cars off that exit on 68, that's our golden ticket.
Time, thank you, Mr. Jinks. Many citizens are discouraged and disillusioned when it comes to that elusive recreation complex. Give us hope. Tell us, how are we going to make that a reality?
I don't think that issue has been solved as far as what we've been hearing about where we want to put that. That complex, the old high school, once we build a new high school, would be a perfect place for it because a lot of the things for the complex is already there. We can improve it, and everything's there. Saves us a lot of money. But that's an issue that's being discussed between council and the school board. Until that issue is resolved, we have to wait and see what happens. I'm all in favor of a complex. Whatever needs to be done, if it benefits the county, the majority of the county, I'm all in. But if it, I mean, I'm not running for council to entertain special projects. The project in hand has to benefit the majority of the county.
You've got some more time left if you need it, if not, we'll go to the next question.
Not really, I mean, it's all in a nutshell. Until we find out where we're going to put this complex, step two is, the money to build this complex, if at a standstill, whatever benefits the majority of the county, me as a councilman, one vote would be, build a complex for the county.
What steps will you take to improve communication with your constituents, and better yet, involve more residents in the decision-making process?
First of all, I encourage more of the citizens to attend the meetings to find out the details, find out the truth about what's going on and not just listen to gossip. We got a council that's been here for the last four years that took a lot of scrutiny. But I think these guys did a lot to save and enhance Hampton County. If, me having four years of county government in YAMC, I learned a lot that's possible and that's not possible as a county leader. A citizen believes that if they feel something needs to be done a certain way, it could be done that way. And not all the time, that's possible. So the decisions that were made, I respect. Would I have made all the same decisions? Probably not. But I don't know the inside details on what they were going through when they made the decisions. Until I'm on council, I can't correctly answer that question.
You ready to move to the next question?
Yes, sir.
How will you help council be more transparent and forthcoming when it comes to every penny of the public's money and its business?
Publish it. Once a month, publish. I mean, the county is always concerned about the money that the county has. That's the main issue. Publish it. Once again, if more of the citizens attend the county council meetings to get details, a lot of times, they can see where a lot of the money goes. I mean, I go to the source when I got a question. I don't listen to the street, because the street's going to give me their opinion, they're not going to give me the facts.
Good answer. Are you ready to move to the next question?
Yes, sir.
All right. We have one question that you haven't been given in advance, but you should be able to answer this one from the heart. I'm interested in moving my family to Hampton County and finding a job, but I've heard some negative things about this place. Tell me, why should I move here?
Hampton County is a loving place. If you're interested in moving to Hampton County for a job, it goes back to what I first said. If we use our golden ticket, let me go back to something else. I don't know, many of you may not know who the previous county administrator for Beaufort County was. His name is Gary Cubic. Spent a lot of time with Mr. Cubic. In one meeting we had with Mr. Cubic, I don't remember what the conversation was that gave him the opportunity to say, Beaufort County is the bank of Beaufort. I think the question was asked when we asked about helping with the train station restoration, which he came up with $25,000 for YAMC to do that. But when he said Beaufort County was the bank of Beaufort, it made me think. How is Beaufort County the bank of Beaufort? Industry. They have a lot bigger population than Hampton County, but industry. That would attract families to move in with jobs as well as our school system. Those two things would make you move to Hampton County. I believe. So if we have more industry, better school system, that would attract you to move to Hampton County.
You have a little bit more time if you need it. If not, you've done a great job.
I would appreciate your vote in November. I promise nothing but one thing. Promise to do my best and use my contacts for the good of Hampton County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jinks. Our next candidate is Ms. Ashley Lawton. Welcome, Ms. Lawton.
Thank you.
I'm trying to remind every candidate, basically you have four questions you prepared for, and there's one impromptu question that you should be able to answer with no prep. And also want to remind everyone that let's address the issues or council as a whole, let's don't single out any particular candidate. So just as a friendly reminder to everyone. I'm going to identify three problems in our county, and we'll address each one as a separate question. First, what ideas or strategies do you have to bring better financial accountability to county government and put us on a stronger footing, particularly in repaying the misspent capital projects money?
Thank you. Well, the first thing that I would like to see done is to bring in a financial advisor, someone who has experience with multimillion-dollar budgets, county budgets, and even potentially with the issues that we have been experiencing here in our own county. I would like for them to be able to review our current situation, our current budget, let us know where we've been, where we are, where we're going to be if nothing changes, and then hopefully provide some possible solutions to our problems. Just reviewing the budget that is available publicly, then anyone here and online can go and view. We are facing, scarily, a potential bankruptcy within two to three years if drastic measures aren't taken. Changes need to be made, and they need to be made now. They need to be effective, and all of the information that council considers should be made available to the public at all times. As far as repaying the money to the CPS T fund, this is where it gets a little tricky. So the problem is, is that the money has already been spent. It's been misspent. And we know that council made a promise to the citizens of Hampton County, and then they broke that promise. It's my desire to have a forensic audit performed, but they are extremely expensive. And I don't think that the citizens of Hampton County should have to pay one penny for that audit. Not having 100% of the information available to me right now makes it hard for me to give anybody a guarantee or a promise, and I think it'd be foolish if I had to do so.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. Once elected to council, I'd be privy to all the information available. We could do further research and hopefully find out where that money was misspent and who is accountable for that. What happened? Why did it happen? Why was the money, excuse me, what was the money spent on and who authorized it? Do we have any legal recourse for those decisions? Once those questions are answered, then the citizens would receive the answers that we also desperately want to hear.
Very good, thank you. Okay, the second question. Many citizens are discouraged and disillusioned when it comes to that elusive recreation complex. Give us hope. Tell us, how are we going to make it a reality?
All right, so I think a great option is the existing Wade Hampton High School complex. We all know that a new high school is supposed to be built. We know that we are combining the current student body from Estill High as well as Wade Hampton, and they are joining together. This leaves an entire complex in the town of Hampton that's available. This complex has existing baseball diamonds, a football field, a track. They also have concession stands and buildings that already have classrooms available for us to use. Now, this would be a potential solution to our missing rec complex, of course, but I do know that there are other things to consider. So there's a contractual process of transferring this from one ownership to another. And these are all things that would need to be discussed within council. Across party lines, it's not about being a Democrat or Republican, it's about what's best for our county. And so we need to work across party lines to make an agreement and a solution that would benefit all of Hampton County and its citizens.
Very good. What steps will you take to improve communication with your constituents, and better yet, involve more residents in the decision-making process?
First and foremost, I would focus on being available to the citizens of the county, as well as increasing open communication. I would love to see our council be willing to participate in town hall meetings. This would allow the public to freely and respectfully communicate with council, have discussions between leadership and the communities that they serve. I would also like to encourage all of the citizens of Hampton County to attend our county council meetings, our school board meetings. And if you can't attend them in person, watch them virtually or watch the replays. We need to be informed, and the only way we can as citizens of Hampton County to be informed is to be in attendance, to watch what's going on, to pay attention, and then to be able to speak with our council members.
You have more time if you need it. If not, we'll move on.
I'm good.
Okay. How will you help council be more transparent and forthcoming when it comes to every penny of the public's money and its business?
Again, I believe that being available and encouraging open communication between council and its citizens that they serve is crucial. All of our budgets are made public, yet there isn't really a good time where the public feels free enough to question or even enough time to review the budget details before council approves them. I think it'd be a good practice to make these preliminary budgets public knowledge. Again, these town hall meetings that I'm talking about would allow for open communication between the citizens and council. First and foremost, I think it's important that all of our leadership, be it council or any other department, realizes that they were elected to serve the people, not to be above the people. It's important that they realize they were elected to be in that position to work for you.
You have more time if you need it. If you're done, you're good. I've said that same thing many times myself. We have one final question that you haven't prepared for. I'm interested in moving my family to Hampton County and finding a job, but I've heard some negative things about this place. Tell me, in your opinion, why should I move here?
Oh, because it's an amazing place to live. My husband is a pastor in Estill, South Carolina. We moved here, and I'll be very honest, I was concerned. When you get online and you do the research, Estill and Wade Hampton, or excuse me, and Hampton, YAMC, even all the places surrounding, it's not a place that's promoted. But when I got here, when I spent time with the people, when I went shopping downtown, when I went into the schools and I met the children, you can't beat this place. There's something beautiful here about a small-town atmosphere and literally being in the middle of almost everywhere. A good friend of mine, Ms. Christine Peoples, once told me, Estill isn't in the middle of nowhere, it's the middle of everywhere. And Hampton County is very same. You can't go anywhere without somebody knowing somebody, related to somebody, or somebody who's come through this area. We have so much to offer, not to mention the festivals that we have, the Watermelon Festival, the churches that are around here that rally around. You know, earlier Sheriff Russell mentioned the tornado that came through our area a couple of years ago. And I remember being boots on the ground trying to help out with that. It wasn't about whether you're white, black, Hispanic, Democrat, Republican, Libertarian, it didn't matter. We were people, and we rallied around with each other, we came to each other, we helped out each other, we served each other. And ultimately, I think that's what makes this area so different from others.
Very good. You have thirty seconds. If you'd like to tell the people anything else?
Well, I can make a plea. When you go vote, please, don't vote straight ticket. Look at every name on your ballot. Remember that when you're voting this time, you're voting for people to serve. Remember that when you're voting this time, you're voting for people to serve you. Make sure that you vote for people who have the professionalism, the experience, and the willingness to do what it takes to turn this county around. Thank you. I'm Ashley. Vote for me.
Thank you, Ms. Lawton. Very good. Thank you. Our next candidate is Ms. Camille Mixon Welch.
Hello.
Hello, Ms. Welch. How are you?
I'm good. I have a question. Are y'all trying to tell me something? Because last time y'all had me as mister, and y'all've got me as mister again. So I'm just, I'm just wondering. I'm just wondering, is there something I need to know?
This is the year 2022, and we don't use, we don't use pronouns like that anymore.
Well, I'm Mrs. Let me just say, I'm Mrs. I want to dispel any doubt of, that's what I am. So.
Well, let me apologize for the typo. I don't think I made that one, but let me apologize for it, but
No problem.
It gave you an opportunity to have a nice opening segue.
It did.
And break the ice, so now everybody's relaxed. So you're welcome for the typo.
Thank you. Thank you. You did it on purpose. Thanks for helping me out.
Remind me, let's do that again next time. Okay, Ms. Camille.
Yes.
Same protocol as last time. You have four questions, two minutes for each question, and one impromptu question. And just a reminder, address the topics, the issues, or county council as a whole, and not individual candidates.
Okay.
What ideas or strategies do you have to bring better financial accountability to county government and put us on a stronger financial footing, particularly in repaying the misspent capital project sales tax money?
Okay. First, I fully support a forensic audit. As I said in the first candidate forum, we don't know where we're going if we don't know where we're starting from. With that being said, and the seemingly fragile financial state that our county appears to be in, the council will have to look at the cost of the audit, because I don't want to incur any more expense that could further hinder the progression of the recreation complex, as well as other desperately needed projects such as the renovations on the council on aging facility. However, I don't believe that the air of distrust that is in our county right now is going to completely go away until county financial records are fully disclosed. So I do feel that a forensic audit is warranted. Second, let's update the county website. Let's make it user-friendly. Let's make it organized. And let's regularly publish the county check register. I don't think you can get any more transparent than that. Let's implement stringent authority limits. Two signatures on all checks over a discussed by council and agreed-upon limit. Fourth, let's approve, let's have the approval of two people on any bank transfer or any movement of funds. And
Thirty seconds.
County council sign off on all grants and loans. And we need to have regular reporting from our county administrator and our finance director. That needs to be on a monthly basis. We need to make sure those figures are accurate. In regards to the CPST, there must be an annual budget appropriation. We must budget to have that money paid back, and there's no other alternative for that. The funds to replenish the misspent funds cannot come from any appropriated tax monies.
Time, Ms. Welch.
Okay.
We know it's a challenge, but you're doing great. Many citizens are discouraged and disillusioned when it comes to that recreation complex. Give us hope. Tell us, how are we going to make it a reality?
Well, from my perspective, Mr. Randy Vaughn suggesting to utilize the current Wade Hampton High School campus as a potential recreation complex is the most feasible and fiscally responsible. The infrastructure is already in place. There's already playing fields, water, sewage, electricity, buildings, a gymnasium, and potentially buses. The location is the general area stated in the 2012 referendum that was passed by the voters of Hampton County. It gives us potential financial wiggle room if a future need arose for satellite recreation facilities throughout the county, being that we wouldn't be constructing a brand-new facility from the ground up. And we could also possibly improve, upgrade some of the existing ballfields, parks, and outdoor courts. And I got that one. Didn't run out of time on that one.
You have more time if you need it.
No, I'm good on that one. I got it.
All right. Well, you did great. What steps would you take to improve communication with your constituents and better yet, involve more residents in the decision-making process?
An audit committee could involve more constituents. Council can ensure county boards and commission vacancies are publicized to engage more citizens. Meeting minutes can be taken and archived for public access. These boards and commissions are an opportunity for more people to learn about county operations, and it's a great opportunity for people to get involved. Also, I will continue, as I have done for the last several months, attending any and every event throughout our beautiful county, building relationships and improving the lines of communication with the community. I've met with county leaders, including Dr. Ronald Wilcox, our school superintendent, Dave Hamel, CEO of Hampton Regional Medical Center, and Holly McQuary of South Carolina Alliance. All of these meetings were extremely positive, and I am ready to work with anyone who sees the positivity and potential I see in Hampton County. I cannot be an effective representative of the people if I am not spending time and talking with you. And if I am elected, this will not change.
Very good, Ms. Welch. You have more time if you need it. If you
Let's go on.
Okay. We've touched on this in an earlier question. How will you help council be more transparent and forthcoming when it comes to every penny of the public's money and its business?
Okay. I'm glad this is the final question because I want to reiterate what I opened with since I didn't get to finish that, so I'm going to condense it. We need to publish the county check register on a newly updated, user-friendly, organized county website. We need to implement stringent authority limits. Two signatures on all checks over a discussed by council and agreed-upon limit. Approval of two people on any bank transfer or any movement of funds should be required, and county council should sign off on all grants and loans. Required regular reporting from the county administrator and finance director provided in a timely manner with accurate amounts. Monthly budget to actual reports of the county's financial transactions must be regularly provided to council. Finance must meet, excuse me, finance must provide an annual calendarized budget, a budget by month, not just one total for the year divided by twelve. Finance should also develop an annual cash flow projection by month to help better manage cash and compare actual receipts to the projections. We need to consider an audit committee. And what I consider, one of the most important points, being available and receptive, talking to the people of Hampton County. I am your ally. If elected, I work for you. I will not forget who put me in that council seat. I need to interact with you regularly to represent you honestly and effectively. And that's it. That's all, folks.
Well, we have one more fun question here for you.
Okay.
I'm interested in moving my family to Hampton County and finding a job, but I've heard some negative things about this place. I want you to convince me and tell me why I should move here.
You will never find a better group of people that are here, right here in Hampton County. We have the most genuine, caring, considerate people that live here, and we see that time and time again. We saw that with the tornado in Nixville. We see that when there is an accident in our community, when our, when a family is hurting in our community. Hampton County always comes together when we need to come together. We always do that. We never have failed on that. And it is just that sense of community. I know that there are issues here, and I know that there are problems here, but I know that we can improve on that. There are good people here, people that are working hard to make this county better and to take it into the future. And it's going to take patience, and it's going to take a lot of hard work, but we can do it. And I'm not afraid to roll up my sleeves, and I'm not afraid to get to work. And I would tell anybody that if they moved here, they're just not going to find a better group of people to live and work with than what you're going to find right here in Hampton County.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Welch.
Thank you.
We have one final candidate for county council. He's our incumbent, one of our incumbents. And he's always last because of alphabetical order, but he's certainly never least. Mr. Darren Williams. Welcome back, Mr. Williams.
Thank you. Thank you. How y'all doing?
I'm good. I turned the heat down so you would feel comfortable.
I feel pretty good.
Good, good. We'll take it easy on you tonight.
Okay.
All right. You've had the fourth questions to prepare ahead of time, and one surprise question that you should be able to answer from the heart. What ideas or strategies do you have, if re-elected for four more years, to bring better financial accountability to county government and put us on a stronger footing, particularly in repaying the misspent capital projects money?
Repeat that.
Okay, sure. What ideas or strategies, we could take it in a two-part question if you want. What ideas or strategies do you have to bring better financial accountability to county government, particularly in repaying the misspent capital project sales tax money?
Good question. Honesty. Transparency. And as far as the misspent, you know, it's something that, you know, I had no control of. And but as we go forward in the future, you, the citizens, y'all put me here. And I will try to do the best that I can to make sure this doesn't happen again. And the accountability side of it, you know, as stewards of citizens' money, you have to be responsible. And that's what's going to make the future better. We being responsible and accountable to the citizens and being able to track the transparency of funds that comes in and funds that's being spent. And that's all I have on that.
Okay. Good answers there. Many citizens are discouraged and disillusioned when it comes to that recreation complex. Give us hope. Tell us, how are we going to make it a reality?
We can do that. With everybody coming together on one accord. Recreation is is one of the main things that I ran on. And to see that it haven't come to fruition, it kind of, it don't kind of hurt, it hurts. And I would love to see Hampton County have a state-of-the-art recreation facility. But it's going to take a whole lot of teamwork, you know. If I have anything to do with it, we're going to make it whole to the citizens of Hampton County. And that's all I have on that.
Okay. What steps will you take to improve communication with your constituents and better yet, involve more people in the decision-making process?
And that's the key. Transparency, communication. Being out there with the community. Getting involved. We have to be more self, service-above-self individuals. We got to render more services to our youth and to the citizens. It's a lot that we can do, but we don't do. We do more talking about what we should do, but we don't step up and do anything. We got to have more volunteers. And that's all I have on that.
How will you help council be more transparent when it comes to every penny of the public's money and its business?
More workshops. We need more workshops. Definitely that. That's where we can go over all transactions and the different things that goes into government and you know, when I first came, I didn't know anything about transparency government. All I wanted to do was get off the stump and go do something. I wanted to go serve the citizens and give back. And it's a good thing when you can give back. Because if you don't, your living's in vain. All of us can serve. There's no person out there sitting in the audience that can't serve. But you have to have a willing heart to serve and to give back. And I see a bright future for Hampton County. A lot of people don't see it, but I see it. We've come a long ways. We got a whole lot to do though. From infrastructure, very little infrastructure, just like I mentioned the last time. You can go in any municipality, go a mile and a half out. You don't have water or sewer. So how are you going to gain any equity? You can't bring no houses in. Take me instance, you go to Somerville, and back in the day, you had the, what? Woods on the left, they call it the ponds now. That wasn't up of woods.
Thirty seconds.
I got you. And they came in there with water and sewer, and look at that. You go up in the ponds and look, you got nice houses. Infrastructure, but that brought equity into the community. If we don't get that infrastructure, we can't have no excessive money. We need infrastructure to build, and that's all I have on that.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. One final question that you, that we want you to answer from the heart. I'm interested in moving my family to Hampton County and finding a job, but I've heard some negative things about this place. Convince me. Tell me why I should move here.
It's a good place to live. I lived here all my life, born and raised, Hampton County. Some things we can work on within the system, school system, which you know we just got that fifty-two million dollars to go toward a new high school. I think that's going to be a big plus for Hampton County. Then you're going to have a state-of-the-art technology right along with it. I mean, things are moving. Where I thought it wasn't going to move, but it's moving. I want to thank the school board and everybody that was involving, bringing that, because it's time for change, you know. If you don't have a skill or a trade, you're a lost community. How are we going to train our kids? I need electrician. I need a heating and air. I need a plumber. I need a building constructor. If you don't have those trades, these kids are going to be lost. All they got to learn how to do, read an inch, and they can cut a board. You know what I mean? Is that taught in the school system? I don't know. It could be. Mechanics. I mean, there's a whole lot that goes behind building a community. If your school system is right, everything will be all right. And I think we have the people in place to make it right. And that's all I have on that.
Mr. Williams, you did a great job. I want to thank you again for coming tonight, and thank you for getting up here and talking to the people.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving along, and we're approaching the last segment of tonight's program. I want the school board candidates to go ahead and move on.